Absent, sorry, Whalen. Here. Zappa? Absent.
Okay. Let's see. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the January sixth board meeting.
I'll write me approval.
I'll second.
Were there any changes or corrections to the minutes?
George. I'm sorry.
Well, look to George.
Oh, it's Colleen.
Colleen.
Colleen is the troublemaker this week?
Yeah.
On the, under public safety, it said the meeting is Friday at 5:30. Should've been Thursday at 5:30.
Are you on page four of the minutes?
Page three.
Page three.
Second paragraph from the bottom.
Public safety.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay.
And that is the meeting that was?
Yes. Any other questions?
So instead of is, it should say was?
No.
Okay, 'cause I'm trying to back the dates up and it's not, okay.
Just change it to Thursday. From Friday to Thursday, that's all.
Okay.
All I'm saying is it's the meeting that was on that date. We had it.
Okay.
All in favor of the motion to approve the minutes with the one change, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carried. Any comments from the floor on items that will not be on the agenda tonight? All right. Seeing done, we'll move on. There are no items from the Plan Commission, so we'll...
There was no meeting.
And there was no meeting. All right. Finance. We'll be combining items A and B, kind of in our discussions. As you can see by your minutes, we have the normal claims for December and January, as well as the costs related to the St. Croix Storage Fire Department. St. Croix Storage Fire, which occurred back in December. Just as a quick point of summary. The village has an agreement with the City of Hudson in that the agreement we have provides for fire protection for which we pay an annual fee. That contract covers about ninety-eight percent of all the costs that would ever be typically associated with fire suppression, as the term is correctly used. With respect to the fire in the shopyards at the St. Croix Storage Facility, obviously, there were a significant number of expenses which fall in the extraordinary category like using more foam, which is a rare commodity, or is rarely used in a typical house fire, which was used by both the City of Hudson as well as by almost all of the mutual aid departments. There were a total of forty-six, forty-three fire departments who were called into service. So we had some bills from them, which totaled about eleven thousand dollars. We had, um, just a second, I got it. It was about thirteen thousand, four hundred and fifty-five from other fire departments. There was a total amount of foam over and above what would normally be included totaling eleven thousand, three twenty-nine. And then there were other support things which were not fire departments, which totaled nineteen thousand dollars, the majority of which was one of the independent contracts that was required to bring in on semi-tubacco's, front-end loaders, forklifts, and other equipment which were here for approximately fourteen hours. Those fall under the extraordinary expense. Now, even though the village has the obligation to the city to pay those, the village also has the opportunity to recover that from the property owner, and the village will be doing so. So the recommendation from the Finance Committee is that we pay our normal, monthly, non-recurring bills as well as those costs that were associated with the fire department experience back in December. Now, the current claims add up to about forty-three thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars and sixty-nine cents. There is one bill in there for four thousand dollars, which we're not paying at this point in time, as we think, and have been told that will be reduced. So therefore, as the Chair of Finance, I would make the same, I'll make the same motion that we did in Finance, to approve the December two thousand eight non-recurring claims totaling fifteen thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars and thirty-two cents. And the January two thousand nine non-recurring claims totaling one hundred and fifteen thousand, seven hundred and forty-two dollars and eighty-four cents. And the December two thousand eight fire claims totaling thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars and sixty-nine cents. Those are claims to date for a total of non-recurring claims for the amount of one hundred and seventy-one thousand, three hundred and fifteen, eighty-five. So I would make that motion, would ask for a second, and then we can discuss it. That was George?
Yes.
Okay. Were there any questions? As I mentioned before, with respect to the fire claims, we had the Fire Chief here earlier at Finance, which was very helpful, and we appreciate Jim being here. The village will meet its obligations to the city. They will take care of payment of the individual claims, which were actually made against the city, not against the village. We in turn will recover those dollars from the property owner, or from the property owner. Questions? And there may be some additional smaller bills coming in in the future, but nothing equal to what we have here tonight. No other questions? All right, then we'll vote on the motion, and we'll start, we have to do a roll call, so we'll start with Sandra. Are you in favor of the motion?
Yes.
Oh, Mark's right. Did you sneak in, or what? Mark is yes. Sandra, yes. Joe?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Larry, one of the things that I think we need to mention, maybe you did while I was talking to the AV technician just now, but this fire actually would have cost us a whole lot more had it not been for all that mutual aid.
You got that right. All right. The other item on the agenda, as you know, we had in the plan to purchase a squad car as well as security glass for certain areas within the office. So the Finance Committee is recommending that we authorize the village administrator to solicit a loan for the purchase of the squad car and the security glass for the windows in the, in the office area for a total amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand.
It's in the issue statement. There's actually a couple of other items that I'll need to...
Need authorization for?
Yeah, keep going.
I thought, is that in Finance?
Yep, back up just a little bit.
Okay, no worries.
Yep, sorry.
Okay. So I'll correct that motion to move the village administrator be authorized to immediately solicit bids from the local and state lending institutions for a loan to fund the Village Hall's service window project and the Police Department new squad car purchase in the amount of thirty-one thousand, to be repaid in, uh... What do we normally do that in, three years? I'll put down three years. The loan will incorporate provisions for two loan payments per year, with the first payment due in two thousand ten, and no prepayment penalties, both of which are our standard loan provision practices. So I have that motion. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it so that we can discuss it.
Okay. Go ahead.
While we have approved soliciting a loan in the amount of thirty-one thousand dollars, that to me does not mean that we have to spend it down to the last dollar. And what I would ask is that Gloria, since you are the supervisor that's here now, and I'll use that in a broad term, if you could ask to see if we are still interested in the security, well, what do we call them here? The serv- the service window, the service windows, to see if everybody is still in agreement that they want them. The reason I'm asking it is there has been a change in the personnel since this came up. And I think about what precipitated this, the interest in these service windows that we had not considered at all when we were building the Village Hall. And it may be that some people now say, you know, I really don't want to work behind that bulletproof glass.
Well, my catch on it, being in the, the general government office with all the tax collection, it is a security issue, and at some point, the state might mandate it just because of all the tax collections that we do.
Okay. Were it not for the tax collections, would we still have that issue?
I don't know. After what happened, I think everybody kind of feels a little bit vulnerable, but we're gonna lose the closeness that we enjoy having when the residents come in.
That's right.
Yeah.
And I'd just ask you to, you know, just consider it, even, we're approving it as a board, and if this is what the staff wants, I don't have a problem with it, but I would hate to have to, I would hate to put these in and then have the staff saying, oh, I hate working behind this wall.
Well, I can kind of go back and have a meeting with my staff and...
And also talk to the Chief, let's see, Becky, okay, O'Keefe, Watson. We have to, we have to use the last names now.
Yes, we do. So what you're doing is, outside of the motion, you're just asking the administrator to say, okay, we'll approve solicitation of the loan, including that dollar amount. But basically asking, giving her the opportunity to possibly not to do that.
Or not, the option is to not do it in toto. So we may say, well, might be a good idea for the deputy treasurer to have a window, but perhaps Becky greeting the public out front says she doesn't feel she needs it, or maybe Becky O'Keefe says she doesn't need it. Just leaving that as an option.
Would it make more sense to just approve the squad car and defer that?
We've deferred this long enough.
I'm not trying to put it off. I'm just saying, if there's some question about it, I've worked under the assumption that we, that we wanted that. Is someone now saying, maybe we don't want that?
That's what I'm asking. And again, because the personnel has changed since the event that precipitated this request. That's all. I'm, I'm still saying...
Is anyone requesting us not to do this?
No, we're all in acceptance of it. We kind of, we probably eighty percent want it. The twenty percent reluctance is the fact that we do like to be able to carry on a conversation without, like, feeling like you do have that wall of glass. The problem is, is that if you don't have that, I mean, especially with the Police Department, it's the windows, they, you know, because they had to be ADA compliant, people can slide right across them, and there is no wall between the deputy treasurer and the deputy clerk. So if you put one in one and not in the other, it really doesn't stop anything.
There is a door in between the two offices.
Oh, I see.
And this is for four windows, correct?
I thought it was only three, but, hold on.
So you're not, you're not looking at the window for the clerk of the court?
You know, I apologize, and I'm sure that that's why the Chief wanted to be here, was to...
There were four windows, but we're only gonna do three, right?
Oh.
That's how I read it.
Thank you. That's it, yes. All four windows, but three of them would have a bump out because there's not enough space to write on, but the one in the front has enough space to write, for a customer to write on, so they don't need the bump out, or the writing surface.
Okay. Even though the question has been raised, which essentially says, are there any second thoughts about putting in the security glass? The answer seems to be no. Pretty much the consensus of the, of the board in terms of what we're, what we're talking about here?
We, what was that, Larry? The consensus of the board is that we don't do the security glass?
No. The consensus is that we still want to install the security glass as originally planned.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any other questions related to that? All right. If not, then we'll vote on the motion to authorize the village administrator to solicit the loans for the squad car and the security windows. And again, we'll start on the other end. Mark?
Yes.
Sandra?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Colleen?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Larry, yes. Okay. Public Works? Well, before we move on to Public Works, I'd like to introduce the newest member of our village staff, Becky Millbrant, is standing in the back, so if the camera could switch to Becky, so everybody in the village can see you. You want to stand up? I want to make sure that everybody has a chance to see you. Becky is the new deputy clerk.
Maybe go to the podium.
There we are, there we are. Good.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
All right. Moving on to Public Works.
Okay. We did not meet last month, but two items did come up, and so we have not talked this over as a Public Works Committee, but they're relatively easy, so we thought we would take care of them at the board meeting.
Good.
The first one concerns a letter of credit for Delta Construction. They had been doing improvements to the seventh addition on Summer's Landing. And if you look over the, let's see, I think Cedar Corporation, Kevin has written a letter to Glory about it, and essentially, the remaining construction punch list items were completed in the spring of two thousand and five, and the required two-year warranty period has expired. And Delta has requested that we, we release that letter of credit obligation to them, and it's to the tune of sixteen thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents. And so essentially, the motion that I have is I move that the letter of credit in the amount of sixteen thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents be released to Delta Construction relating to the improvements made to the seventh edition of Summer's Landing subdivision.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any questions on it? Okay. Seeing done, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. Another item came up in terms of a contract with St. Croix Tree Service for tree and stump removal. And essentially, what we have in front of us is the contract that we had in two thousand and eight has essentially the same dollar amount and same contract as we have for two thousand and nine, or what's proposed for two thousand and nine. And I don't know that there's a whole lot that we need to discuss there, because it does remain the same, and the costs are the same. And so what I would recommend that we do is approve the contract with St. Croix Tree Service for tree and stump removal dated the third of February two thousand and nine, per the attachments in our, in our booklet.
Good. Is there a second?
A second.
Any questions? Same contract, same cost, service is one that we have to buy, so certainly not going to be, certainly not going to be removing our own trees. Okay? That's a contract, so I think that requires a roll call vote. Are there any other questions for Joe, for Public Works? If not, then we'll do a roll call, start on the other end again. Mark?
Yes.
Sandra?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Larry, yes. George?
Yes.
Oh, there is one other item.
Okay.
Thank you, Glory. I had almost forgotten about this. We normally have our meetings on Tuesdays, third week of the month, and this coming month of the seventeenth is on a Tuesday, and there's an election that day, so we will not be able to meet at our normal time at six o'clock. So we plan to meet, oh, with an abbreviated meeting at six o'clock on the eighteenth. I think Plan Commission meets right at, after that, at seven, so I think we should be able to get out of here in, in an hour. There's just a couple items on the agenda, they should be relatively smooth to go through. So I just wanted to make that notice to everybody here, that our, the Public Works meeting has been changed to Wednesday, February eighteenth at six o'clock.
Okay.
Thank you again, Glory, and I am, that concludes Public Works.
Public Safety, George?
You have the minutes of the last meeting in front of you, as well as the Chief's report from January eighth. You'll notice there are three topics on his, in his report. One of them is the card grant, and we're looking at, we have every reason to believe that the card grant will be approved in the amount of over ninety-two thousand dollars, and that'll take care of wages related to compliance checks. You also see that there's some information there, some comments about volunteers out on the ice skating rink. And if you have any questions on that, we can address that, as well as a modification of an ordinance having to do with school bus warning lights, especially, or specifically for the school buses that transport our special needs children. That'll be a topic of conversation at the February Public Safety meeting. And so we'll hold off any further discussion on that one until after that meeting. The other thing I'd just like, I was invited to attend the Western Wisconsin Intergovernmental Collaborative Meeting on Monday, January twenty-sixth, and the topic was sustainable community development. And it was by a professor from the University of Wisconsin River Falls, Kelly Kane. This information is actually posted on the website for the University of Wisconsin River Falls. And if you want details, I could go through a lot of detail on sustainability, but I think it, anyone who's interested in that, either contact me, or I'll be more than, and I'd be glad to point you in the direction of that website. The other thing, and this is something that I'll just share with the, with the public, it came to me, it's come to me several times this winter, and so I'd like to pass it on as a request to those people who like to jog, run, walk their dogs, or anything like that, especially early in the morning before the sun comes up. And those who do the same at the end of the day, after they come home from work, and they're taking the dog out for a walk, or they're just out jogging themselves and it's after dark, would you please wear something reflective so that motorists can see you? Specifically, if you're walking along roads that don't have sidewalks, and you're walking in the street, you're very difficult to see if you're wearing your black sweats, a black shirt, or jacket, and a black hat, you sort of blend into the night. I've had people tell me the only reason I didn't hit that person was because I saw the reflection off of their sneakers. And so I would ask you to please, you may have the right of way, but that's something you may be saying in a hospital bed somewhere because motorists just couldn't see you. The reflective equipment I'm talking about, you can buy a reflective jacket, or you could just get some reflective tape and put an X on your back. Sandra?
Mr. Public Safety Chair, if I could make an addendum to that, I was out the other day getting my mail. I live on Helen Street, as you know, and I've noticed there's no posting of speed limit on Helen Street, it seems like, at all.
It's an aircraft landing strip, is what that street has become.
Because of the snow buildup, I was actually about this far from my mailbox, just, I was just missed by a car going very fast, very close to the curb. So the opposite of that is, drivers also, please...
That's right.
Just get my mail.
If, if you see a vehicle traveling at excessive speed past your house, please take note of at least the description of the car. Don't call me. Call the Police Department right here, and talk to Becky. Give her a description of the car, and the Police Department will keep an eye out for that vehicle. It has worked in the past, it will continue to work well. If you notify them, they will do something about it. So thanks for bringing that up.
Not this Becky.
Not this Becky. Becky O'Keefe.
Watch out for ya already.
I think I'm finished, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Before we get off Public Safety, you know, as you're looking through your, your materials for tonight, there's a huge amount of information in there with respect to the invoices and breaking out the costs and understanding it. Part of what is not in there is also getting back and, to some of the, you know, various invoices and either getting a much better understanding or getting an agreement from the person who sent the invoice, or from the entity that sent the invoice to resubmit one in the future, which will be lower, or to change it. So I want to thank Gloria and George for all of the groundwork they did with respect to this. It's a lot of work. So thank you. Public Welfare?
We didn't meet in January.
Okay. So there was no meeting, so no report? No? Okay. Park Board?
The main thing, we're still considering the skate park in Summer's Landing. We did have some citizens voice some concerns last month at our meeting regarding potential for vandalism or illegal behaviors. They meant, also brought the fact that there's no restroom facilities there. So we're continuing to look into some of these issues. Also, I'd like to point out that the park plan is now on the website, thank you, Sandra, which kind of outlines what we'd like to accomplish in the next several years. And I checked it, and it worked. And I'll say that the skating rink has, continues to be a good success.
Good.
And that's all I have.
Okay. All right. Moving on, new business. It is time to appoint the current term for our current representative of the Library Board.
Larry?
Yes?
Excuse me just one moment. Colleen does have one other thing she'd like to talk about.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, it was just brought to my attention that, a suggestion to name the skating rink...
Hold off on that one. Hold off on that one. I was talking about the Woodcrest Park.
Oh, the Woodcrest Park, yeah. We have our new sign for Woodcrest Park.
We have our new sign for Woodcrest Park. And we are gonna try to get the other signs throughout the parks to kind of match, something like that.
Okay. And for somebody who may not be familiar, Woodcrest Park is located where?
That's the one on Tenth Street.
Okay.
Part of Tenth Street, and then on where Cedar turns into Prairie.
Okay. So, that's kind of like the Models, the Model sign, so to speak?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's very nice.
Good looking. Good looking. Okay, anything else?
No.
You sure? Moving on, uh, as I mentioned, the, uh, the term of our representative to the Library Board, uh, will be soon expiring with the change in the, uh, agreement between the participants, uh, the City, the Village, and the Townships with respect to the library. Uh, that term now, uh, will be, uh, starting five-one of each, of each year, it's a three-year term. So, I would, uh, make a motion and recommend Jim O'Connor, uh, to continue to act as the Village Representative to the Library Board for a three-year term beginning five-one oh nine. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Any questions on that? If not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carried. Just a couple of other items, uh, I did get some information back from the electrical contractor we've been working with, with respect to the cost of the generator. The primary question has been really centered around how big of one do we need? Uh, the good news is, we're not gonna need one as large as we had anticipated. Uh, the current historic demand, uh, for us has been about twenty-two point three kilowatts, and so we'll be able to get by with a thirty-five watt set. So, the quick and dirty estimate says we're probably looking at about twenty thousand dollars for a generator, ten thousand for the other installation items, for a total of thirty thousand. Previously, we had thought it was gonna be forty, forty-five thousand. So, it looks like it's gonna be significantly less than we had expected. And also, we'll probably, hopefully, uh, we'll take that up. It wasn't, obviously, it wasn't on the agenda for tonight, so we'll add that to the, uh, March meeting.
Larry, did, did someone actually take a look at the facility that is, or what's in place downstairs?
Yes.
You know, that big switch that we paid quite a bit for during the installation, that shouldn't, okay?
Yep, yep.
Alright.
They actually did a pretty comprehensive analysis of what was needed, went back through the actual usage, uh, from Excel. Uh, got the data, came over and inspected, what electrical capabilities do we have now? So, um, it'll be a, it'll be a very simple installation, very honestly. Oh, okay, now I just want to remind people, we'll have two Board meetings in March, one on March third, and then because of the April elections, we'll have one on March thirty-first. And that's all I had. Board, chairman?
Um, yes, um, uh, I guess I'm gonna ask the two committee members for Public Welfare whether there is a meeting needed for February, um, since Jim won't be in attendance, or is there any issues?
He won't be in attendance then?
Right.
Okay.
Is there?
Then no.
Okay. And then, um, we will be having a statewide primary on February seventeenth. No local, um, need for a primary, but it is a statewide, so there will be that, and that's it.
Okay. Okay. That's it, I don't have any other items on the agenda. So, Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
I'll second.
All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carried. Meeting is adjourned.